Kristin Weaver, Mayor Portim.
Sophie Pope, Council.
Danielle McKinney, Councilmember.
Amy Niesel, Councilmember.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
Jenny Pompey, Councilmember.
Okay, any information items for the end of the meeting? Well, if they're none, we hope these work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month will change information with community stakeholder groups or gather information from staff advisory reports of residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Our work sessions and our meetings are open with public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law so that residents and others can observe our deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. So we'll pause periodically for public comment. We've got a lot of ground to cover this evening, so we may not, probably won't pause in between each of the committee reports and the discussion that goes on, but we will certainly pause. And when we do, if you're in the room and you raise your hand and you wish to make a public comment, after being recognized, you can go to the podium, to the microphone, and you'll need to state your name and where you live in Green Belt more or less or in the area. If you are watching on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab at the bottom of the screen to actually submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized, you can, you'll need to state your name and where you live. We don't take anonymous comments on Zoom. And finally, if you're watching on cable TV or live streaming on Facebook or YouTube, you can just send us an email. The email address is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So the time limit for a public comment, three minutes, and we ask you to try and be civil. Really, it's not that hard. That's our goal. We're all neighbors. So two minutes and let's have a good discussion. So tonight is one of my favorite work sessions. It's when we have a chance to actually sit and talk with our advisory board chairs. And there really aren't that many times when the advisory board chairs are all in the room at the same time to share information or best practices. So the room is a little bit bigger than usual. We've got 16 different advisory boards, commissions that are currently in existence. We really want to have an opportunity to hear from each of you. So what we've done to facilitate that is we actually asked each of the committees to submit a little bit of information because, you know, we, basically, it's pretty straightforward. We would like to know how many people are on your commission, how many people on your advisory board, how many vacancies you have, a couple of your big achievements in the past year, and a couple of things that you're looking towards working on in the coming year. So we sent out a request, I think it was on Thursday, so it's not as much time as would have been ideal. But what I'd like to do in order to get to all of you is to just kind of go around the room and cover these basic questions that are up on the screen. And so several of the advisory committees sent in their information at the time. So let's go ahead and start things off with the Advisory Committee on Education. And you know, we've got microphones around, so you may have to share, but that's the Green Belt way. Is it green? You're good.
Okay, uh, this is the advisory.
You can probably pull that a little bit closer.
I'm Janet Mersky. I'm Chair of the Advisory Committee on Education. We currently have five members out of the nine that we were hoping. We were a little closer at one point, but we lost two. One to health issues and one who's moving away. So we're hoping to find more people. For this year, every year we have meetings with the principals and the PTA presidents, and the principals came up with two very interesting ideas. One was that they're always looking for leadership opportunities for their student government leaders. So we said, we can help, and we had a meeting with the student government leaders, and it went very well, and we're going to make it a regular yearly event now. We have our grant program. We awarded grants to two schools, which is twice the number we had last year. Still not as many as we would like, but then we, since we only had the two schools, we decided to support the CARES run program, Because I Can Code, which is a summer program that teaches young people how to do computer coding. We had our educator and student of the award of the year award ceremonies. Thank you to the City Council for that. And we gave out scholarships. And we march in the Labor Day Parade, which we've been doing for probably 30 years now. So for next year, we're going, we have a couple of ideas to help PTAs. We had a meeting with our counterparts in College Park, their Advisory Committee on Education, and they support the PTAs to do morning coffee outreach to parents, to bring them in, to get them to see the school, talk to the teachers. So we're going to present that idea to them next year. And they found that the students come in in August, September, and they've got lots of supplies because it's really easy to find school supplies. The stores have them all over the place. But by February, kids start running out, and they do a replenishment program in College Park. And we were going to suggest that as well for the PTAs. We want to expand the school grant application due dates. Now, something else in from our discussion with the principals, some of them said they would like to have, to submit their proposals in August before the schools start, before the students come in. Others said they would rather have it in October. So we decided we can accommodate both of them. They have a choice. They can submit in August or they can submit in October. The grant either way has to be finished by the end of the school year. And we were going to suggest for next year that they support their student governments, because every one of them said that they really could use more funds. We give out scholarships to the high school seniors at our awards assembly, and we had enough in the fund for a couple more years, but it won't last forever. So we are working now on identifying new funding sources. And we've been approached by the Rotary Club, who might also want to do a scholarship award to somebody going to a trade school or a two-year school, which we think is a wonderful idea. And last, we would like to have the City Council encourage the other committees to march with us in the Labor Day Parade. We shouldn't be the only ones.
Oh, hmm. This is a pretty tough group here, looking at the board chairs. That's a great idea, great suggestions. Thank you. Hey, let's move on next to the, next to Crab. Crab, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so, my name is Matt Sickle. I'm the Chair of Crab. We had seven members, but our previous chair left. He got a new job opportunity and wasn't able to continue on his chair too, so you're all stuck with me. We have six members and three open slots of the nine that we're eligible to have, although I really think we can handle what we do with about seven. We'll be fine. In last year, our primary focus, the thing that took most of our time, was reviewing the Buddy Attic Master Plan and providing comments to the consultant and city that put that together. And we were glad to see that that passed through council. And we continued our usual work of reviewing recognition group applications and grant requests. For next year, now that we've gotten one park master plan off our docket, we're looking forward to participating in the Indian Creek Park Master Plan process. Good to see more park development in the city. We also look forward to advising the city on how it begins to implement Buddy Attic Master Plan, helping to identify, you know, which, which aspects of the plan to go after and put to work first. And also because of the substantial amount of open space proposed in the Armory Site Plan, we hope to be involved in giving a voice to how that shakes out.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. And next up, we've got the Advisory Planning Board. Let's see, I haven't seen the chair. Jake Davis, are you here? I'm sorry, sorry.
Ben Friedman, Chair of the Advisory Planning Board. So we have a nine member, seven citizens, two ex-직원. And two of the seven citizen members, we have two vacancies right now. One of our members passed away and another one. So, you know, it'd be great to build those vacancies with people to have something to add to the board, for sure. So in FY25, we've, we've done reviews of the Strategic Wayfinding Plan in September and April, most recently, the Buddy Attic Master Plan. There's a traffic calming study that we've been proposing with the planning department on with looking at Ridge, Lakeside, and Green. And then the, also the Better Bus Network, February. And then we most recently had a departure hearing for the Maryland Trade Center where they were parking allotments, which park seated, or their nest, the required parking, we did a part of seating at least, and there's a lot of parking back there that is just on you.
See, it's.
And I'm happy to see that that went through and passed. Went to the county. So for FY26, I think we have three main priorities really is working with the planning department on our approach to, you know, how do we implement Vision Zero, which is zero traffic to death in the city. It's something that's been talked about a lot all over the country and something that we should be in line with. In terms of economic development, we've reached out to John Mason, try and see how we can work with him to support their efforts on the strategic plan development. And I know there's a work session months on that. So we'll see whether we can, how we can coordinate. And then looking at Armory and our candidates, we'll see how we can work with. I think Beltway Plaza is another missing opportunity right now. And talking with Jamie Spirit, who's my liaison for the planning department about that, and we'll tell Luisa Robles about how we can help move along there.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Dr. Kressler. I think you said something about having, you've got a slide, but you can't put it up. Do you want to go ahead and report down? Do we have it? Go ahead. Hey, thank you very much. That's fantastic.
Just wanted to say, especially with that, like, basically have to eat it in order for people to hear you. And if everybody else could just try to move it closer. So we just got.
Don't eat it. Just get it nice and close. Hey, and finally, we've got Green, Green Belt, Green ACES. John, now, you sent in, we asked for one slide. That wasn't good enough. You sent in 10.
It said slide, and then afterwards, it said slide presentation. And by the way, this was prepared two weeks ago for another meeting that I'll tell you about. Okay, my name is John Lippert. I'm the Chair of Green ACES and also Chair of the Green Team. Next slide, please. So these are our members. We have 10 out of 11. One of them has some health issues, so, but otherwise, we are just missing one. Kristen Weaver is our council liaison. Luisa Robles is our staff liaison, and both of them have been very, very knowledgeable and helpful with us. Now, I'm going to spend a minute describing who the Green Team is for those new members on City Council and those veteran members who seem to not get it right yet. Green ACES, as you all know, is the advisory committee that is here to advise City Council, answer questions on sustainability topics from the council or the city. And we also have been doing outreach for decades. So the Green Team is a separate body with a different mission, but it overlaps an awful lot with, with Green ACES. And I'm the Chair of the Green Team as well. The Green Team consists of all Green ACES members. That's where it gets a little confusing. Plus, four others, Susan Barnett, Maggie Cahalan, Michael Hartman, and Steve Skolnick, who are only Green Team members. They're not members of Green ACES. Steve here can't become one since he's on another committee. And the others have been on Green ACES in the past. So the mission of the Green Team, it was formed 2011, 2012, right around there. And we did our first certification in 2013. The idea was to have leaders of Green Belt, staff, council, civic leaders, business leaders, all working together to make the city more sustainable. And if you know what lead for buildings is, this is lead for municipalities. It gives a bunch of different criteria. You get points for it. And the point, the aim is that if there are these different activities that your town or city is not doing, it encourages you to do it so you can get more points. And we've been the leader in the last couple of rounds. We get recertified every three years. Oh, Sustainable Maryland certified, I'm sorry. So it's municipalities all across the state of Maryland. And it requires a major amount of work if we want to become a leader with all the points, because you have to not only say what you're doing, we've got a farmer's market, we're doing EV events, we're doing this and that and this, but you have to give proofs. And that can take an awful lot of time to do. So, but, so, there, we do outreach. The Green Team must do outreach as well to get points. Green ACES has been doing outreach. So a lot of times, we're doing things together. Okay, next slide, please. So two weeks ago, and that's why I made this presentation and just modified it slightly, the Green Team, Green Belt Green Team, attended the Route One Corridor Green Team Summit at the University of Maryland, which does, manages the whole program. And it was, geez, I forget how many different communities there were there. And we learned from, we're basically doing the same thing. We say what we've been doing, what we hope to do in the near future. I was so surprised that so many communities around us have curbside food scraps pickup program. Mount Rainier does it on themselves, and Comar, no, Cottage City works with Compost Crew, just like we are doing. And there were a couple of other ones too. So I was surprised. I knew that they did it in Virginia. I didn't know that they did it around here. Next slide, please. So solar energy. Our Green Team, oh, I'm gonna have to get this right or he's gonna hit me over the head. Our Solar Energy Task Force Green Team member, Steve Skolnick, was the one that worked with the city to do the RFP, to evaluate the proposals, and served as the program manager for how many years? Over 10 years to get this thing and now it's operational and will provide approximately 50% of the municipal buildings' electricity from this solar system. It's now operational. That means it's up and running. Yeah, yeah, it's the same thing. Okay, next slide. So we have been doing an annual EV event. We've done it now three times, one in each one of the three neighborhoods of Green Belt. So we'll look forward to doing another one probably in September or early October. That's when National Drive Week is, where they do it across the country as well. Next slide, please. So solid waste disposal. The City Council came to us and said, because of the rise in price of the tipping fee and because of a deficit for providing this service, they asked us what our recommendation was for the fee change. It had to, it had to be increased. So we gave our recommendation, and we had a three-pronged approach. We said, in addition to raising the fee, we'd like you to do, next slide, please, what we call Save As You Throw. It's a unit-based pricing in which, well, you folks here, City Council, already know about it. We had a work session, half of the work session, just on this. Now, so you approved it at the budget, City Council meeting.
We approved the budget. We didn't, we didn't approve the program. We're still gonna have to do.
You approved that we would do it. You didn't approve the specifics, and that's what we need right now. We need the numbers. So we need to have a City Council meeting where you folks can vote on the specific numbers so we can get out there and educate the public. Because if this thing starts up in January, it's going to require a major outreach effort and all different types of media. And we can't even begin until we know what the base price is gonna be, what the opt-out price is gonna be.
We'll go into this more later. We need to move it along, John. I'm sorry.
Okay. Next slide. So this is it. Next slide. So we're hoping also that the Save As You Throw program is gonna provide a surplus or a bit more revenue to the city that will allow the city to continue the curbside food scrap pickup program that's been funded by the USDA grant until August. So we're hoping to have this continued in September, and that's what we'll be working on as well. Next slide, please. And we do all different types of outreach. We have a table every year at the Labor Day Festival, Information Day, and also here at Green Man Festival, and I mentioned the EV event. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank, very comfortable. Uh, let's see, let's move on. The Advisory Committee on Trees. Somebody here from Advisory Committee on Trees? Charles, good evening. How are you? Mr. Jackman, are you there? Muted. Let's see, it looks like he may be muted, but we can see. Sorry.
He's not muted, so I think it's something about the...
Okay. Tell you, yeah, we'll work on that. If you could log out and log back in, we'll come back to the Advisory Committee on Trees in just a few moments. Let's, okay, Mr. Jackman? So we're gonna come back to you. But I would suggest if you log out and log back in, that might solve the problem, whatever it is. Who knows? Could be the humidity. How about the Arts Advisory Board?
Great. Thank you. I'm Tom Lamond. I'm the Chair of the Arts Advisory Board. Right now, we have seven core members. It's like we have two openings, two available slots for anybody who might be interested in joining the Arts Advisory Board. We spend a lot of time considering art projects, or considering public art. In the past, we've given input into the use of the community center for recreation. Given input into the wayfinding project with the Advisory Planning Board. We provide input into public art projects. Currently, there's, there are two public art pieces that we discussed and provided recommendations for, for Motiva and for the Brayfield Public Art. We do outreach to the arts community. Last year, we had a, annually, we have a mixer, which we traditionally held at the Museum Cafe. This year, we're looking at maybe doing it during the Arts Open House in the community center, providing a space for artists to come in and meet the Arts Advisory Board, share their ideas, and even consider being on the Arts Advisory Board. We report to City Council, as does every other advisory board. One of the things that I think we're, we're finding that we do is we try to encourage critical mass on projects that people bring to our attention. For example, in a couple of cases, we've talked about mural projects where somebody's come to us and said, we'd like there to be a mural project. And we go to them and we say, well, how would you like to think that happened? How can we support that? And they look at us like, well, aren't you gonna do it? And we're like, well, no, not really. But, but, good news on that is it looks like the co-op is planning to do a mural and possibly a theater. I was thinking about doing a mural as well. And then we also participate in the recognition. That's who we are, and that's what we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lamond. It's great. Let's move next to the Board of Appeals.
That would be me. Hi, Steve Skolnick, I'm Chair of the Board of Appeals for a short time now. And we are the best committee.
Hold on a second, Steve, because the person is saying that they couldn't hear the Arts Advisory Board, that they could hear the one on Zoom. So I wonder if there's a problem with the connection between the Zoom and the mics in the room. So I wonder if there's a problem with the connection between the Zoom and the mics in the room.
Could be. Thanks for bringing that up. And our technical, uh, support will be looking at that. So you, you were saying something about your board being the best one?
Well, yeah, we are the best committee because we have the very best staff liaison, Terry Ruby. Um, and she does her job so well that we have no work. The Board of Appeals, um, is a reactive group, of course, and, and, uh, and we meet when there is a problem with, uh, with some very specific zoning issues that the city is allowed to adjudicate. Those haven't happened this year at all, so we have had no cases. Uh, there are three of us, um, and myself and, um, David Waples and Donald Martin, uh, two very fine gentlemen. And, um, there's really not a whole lot more to say, other than the fact that Terry has contacted me and apparently there is a possibility that we may pick up some more work. And possibly even reviews of things that APB is doing is, anyway, uh, that's, that's to be determined and, um, and we'll see what the future brings, but, uh.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your service. I, I don't know, the, the best advisory board committee, some people in this room may have something to say about that. Uh, let's see, Board of Elections?
Hi, my name's Nicole Shaw. I'm a Board of Elections member, um, here on, on, uh, our chair's behalf. Steve Gilbert is our wonderful chair and he's not feeling well tonight. Um, we also have board members Allison Gary, Beth Terry, and our wonderful, um, city liaison is of course Ms. Benita Anderson, who we, um, are very grateful to. Um, we have, we are allowed up to five members, so we currently have one vacancy. Um, but as you know, turnaround with, uh, boards can occur on quick notice, so I would recommend one to two, you know, recruits would be a good idea. Um, for this year, it's an election year, so we're very busy with making sure that we have vendors in place for election coming up this year and also, um, making sure we're on schedule to run a smooth election. Um, we've been meeting recently to make our selections of, um, vendors, including Clear Ballot, New Ink, and Fort Orange. And, um, we've also, within the past year, been working on, um, amendments to the city charter, which include things like all resident voting. And for, uh, upcoming, we'll be having a work session with council to talk about some potential questions to put on this year's ballot, including things like whether or not we should districts, council terms, changes, and rigged choice voting is one of the items that was brought up. Um, as for things to look forward to, I'm, I mean, personally, I am a proponent of trying to do better voter outreach, to, you know, get the participation up in our city. Um, and, and thinking about that as well, potentially recruiting someone who's not from Central, Greenbelt Central as a board member with groups.
Okay, and I guess 2026, you're probably looking forward to being finished with the election.
Yes, hopefully we'll have certified that election and nothing goes awry.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, next up, uh, Community Relations Advisor Board, Craft?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chalia, Chalia La. So until recently, um, Rick Ranson was the, uh, Chair of the Community Relations Advisor Board, so I just replaced him a few months ago. Um, we have seven members and, um, one vacancy. And some of the activities that we participated in, um, one of the big ones, and I think we're still actually expecting, um, feedback from the city council, is our recommendation to the council on making a welcome sign at either two or three main entryways or at the Buddy, um, Lake, Shrum Hills Park. So welcome signs in maybe, um, three or four top languages that are spoken within the city to, um, welcome residents as they come in. And the other activity we participated in was, um, the showing of the movie Join or Die, and that was to encourage a volunteerism. So that was something that we worked on too. And we've participated in the grant review. I've heard a few other, uh, boards and committees talking about that, and so we also actively participated in that. Um, just for me personally, I participated in various city activities, including the immigration sessions. So we're able to take that back to some of our immigrant communities within the city and just give them some advice on what was going on, as well as the planning session. So for our board, the, uh, 26 goals really is, one of the things we talked about is, um, trying to see how we could bring, I don't know if the word is, better cohesion from the three different communities within the city. Um, so that's something that we are working on and, um, we hope to come up with a plan soon. I am pleased to mention that, um, we have one of, uh, um, city council members who we think is one of the best, um, council member Jenny. She's been very supportive of our board, so thank you Jenny for that. And, uh, city council liaison is, um, Tim George, and he also has been phenomenal. So that's what we're working on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, next up, let's go to, uh, the Employee Relations Board.
And I think for those mics, they're saying that, whichever mic you want to use, but I think they're saying online that it's pretty faint, I think, with those mics, so you really have to get it really close to your mouth.
Do the best we can. Okay, uh, I'm Bob Rudd. Can you hear me?
Well, I think the problem is not with us. I think it's the people online, so I think, yeah, just get it really close to your mouth.
Okay, uh, I'm Bob Rudd. I'm the Chairman of the, uh, Chairperson of the Employee Relations Board. We have five members, uh, myself, Lisa Behanjunk, Elizabeth Gaines, Kathy Seanella, Stan Zirkin. Uh, Elizabeth's been on for 30 years. I've been on for 10, uh, I believe. Kathy's on five. Lisa should be around five, and Stan just came aboard about five or six months ago. Um, our staff liaison is Benita, who does a fantastic job. She keeps us going. We're power there. Uh, as far as news on the committee goes, I beg your indulgence here because I have to have glasses on to read. No news is good news, as I report all the time. Uh, we are the people who employees come to when they have grievances that cannot be handled through the normal procedures, um, as well as, um, things to do with the, uh, police union, so to speak. We work in confidentiality, obviously, to protect everybody's privacy. Our, our meetings are closed unless the employee question wants a public meeting. That is strictly on their decision. One of our hallmarks is we do strive, it doesn't always happen, but it usually does, to have unanimity in everything we decide on. What we decide is sent to the council, uh, which the council knows, but for the public certification. Council has the final approval, and, you know, at least in my 10 years, uh, I do not know of anything that has not been approved or has not been sent back to us. We work much like a court. That's about the best way to put it. We listen to the evidence. People are free to bring lawyers, bring witnesses. Everybody that comes before us is sworn in under the perjury laws of the state of Maryland. Uh, testimony is given, uh, evidence is provided, et cetera. We strive to get decisions put up to everybody within 30 days of, of a hearing. A lot of things go back and forth in discussions. Let's see, what else can I tell you? One of our recommendations is always a continuing recommendation, that is to the city manager uh, and the, uh, people who work under him, for a continuous revising. It's supposed to be done at least every six months of the entire procedures manual for every employee in the city. Uh, at least the part that is bullet point, meaning it would go for everyone. That is to be distributed with every update, or at least pages of updates, every six months. Anybody coming on new is supposed to get a complete update, complete booklet. That's one thing, uh, I am reasonably confident we would like to have brought back to us by the city manager and city staff because that's a standing order we have, so to speak, and we haven't seen one now for about a year and a half. Uh, so that's something that the city manager really needs to come on. Other than that, we don't have a budget. The way the process works is that there is a grievance from an employee that cannot be handled internally. They follow the proceedings, the procedures, the legalities, put it to us. Um, as long as it will reflect what our guidelines are, our, our, our rules, so to speak, we will schedule a hearing, get everybody's concern. That means anybody from the city, from the city manager's office, city attorney, anybody that the city wants to send, as well as anybody that the grievant wants to send. Our decisions are binding, with the exception that they can be appealed to the city council. And after that, if somebody still does not like the final decisions, they can go through the court system. At least in my 10 years on the committee, through two different terms, and living in the city since 1985, I'm not aware of any court cases. I think that's about it. Any say? Importing concerns? No. Reappointments? We have five. Took a while to get the fifth, and we had Kevin, uh, step aside. I would suggest it's probably a good idea to always have a bullpen of one person, uh, who could come in, although we can certainly work with four or three. Uh, it's only when we get down to two that we have a problem, and that's never happened. It's never gone below four. Oh, let's see, who else here? That is about it. Okay, anybody else? Has any questions or concerns? That will be it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, let's move to the Ethics Commission, and after that, let's try and go back to the Advisory Committee on Trees.
Hello? I'm Isaiah Horton. I am representing the Ethics Commission. On that commission is Bob Zuckbee, David Benack, David Shapiro, and myself, Isaiah Horton. Um, we meet annually to review the financial disclosure forms from our officials elected and appointed. And we meet in a, um, in the election years also to review the candidate disclosures requirements. So we'll be meeting this year. We try to condense that into one meeting instead of doing the annual earlier in the year and the election later. We'll see how it goes. I was trying to do the same thing this year because I'm the incoming chair. I haven't called it my first meeting tour yet, so. For 2025, we successfully worked with our council to update and adopt our ethics ordinance. And, um, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
No, thank you so much, Isaiah. Let's see, let's see if we can go back to the Advisory Committee on Trees. Uh, Charles, are you there? Oh, it looks like, let's see, is there something with the volume or something on Zoom, perhaps? And I know Charles probably logged off and logged back, back in, but we're still not seeing, uh, hearing.
So the email we got said they could hear him on Zoom, so it's something about the connection between the Zoom audio in the room.
Right, so, uh.
I'm not sure that would solve the problem because I think the audio is getting to Zoom, the Zoom is not getting to the speakers in the room.
So, so Charles, uh, please bear with us and we'll try and get this worked out. Appreciate your patience. Thank you so much. Uh, let's move on to the Forest Preserve Advisory Committee. Anybody here from Forest?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, Thomas Doggett, Co-Chair of Forest Preserve Advisory Board. Uh, we are currently at, with one new appointment. We are at seven members and we have two vacancies. Uh, Kevin Driscoll is our, uh, staff liaison. Amy is our council liaison. We've continued to work, uh, one major accomplishment, we did finish, uh, trail maintenance reroute with the Canyon Creek, uh, those trail that was coming to, or was eroding into Canyon Creek, and that was reported to council, and we just did that, uh, early last month. Uh, that was led by Christopher Smith, uh, Boy Scout troop, uh, 249, and some other, uh, members of the lacrosse team from Eleanor Roosevelt. Ongoing issues with invasive maintenance, invasive management workdays to take care of honeysuckle, uh, bush honeysuckle. And, um, I think our big hot button issue right now is the fire that just happened in To Bark, and we're talking with GHI Woodlands Committee because they're gonna be the one, part of the woods that's adjacent to the houses, and also, uh, DNR, Maryland DNR Firewise Program, and we're preparing a recommendation to council on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And, uh, next up, we've got, uh, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Is, is, is the button green? It sounded like yes. Sorry.
I don't think that mic is working because we're not getting anything on the Zoom and even in the captions, so we might have to pass one of the others down. Yeah, I think those are, those are, work a little bit better now.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. There we go. Now you can hear me. Again, I'm Carol Shaw with the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and I'm talking about the open forum that we do every fall in which we listen to Greenbelt residents, who tells what they like about living in Greenbelt, and then tell us what they would like to see improved in the city of Greenbelt. We send this report to city council with our top three or four priorities. And this past year, as in many years, one of the top priorities was senior housing needed in Greenbelt, and particularly affordable senior housing. And we specifically requesting that our committee be included in the planning process or any discussions about the planning process that deal with senior housing for independent living. And specifically, we're talking about the 55 and up community that's being developed. So we would appreciate invitations to that, and you can send it to Mary Wade and she'll get it to me. Um, the second thing is, we always have issues that are about safety. And one issue that comes up every single year is the edges of the outdoor steps between the community center and the library parking lot require maintenance to provide walking security, and they're not well, I guess the edges are deteriorating or something like that. And every year, we say something about it and it, nothing ever happens. So we worry about senior citizens, particularly in the evening, or walking down the steps or up those steps. And these are highly specific things. Then another one is at the intersection, which I think the city is working to address, at Hanover Parkway and Greenbelt Road. You know, obviously, there's major issues with people crossing that road, and particularly for visually impaired people. The fourth one we have here, um, is we ask the Maryland Highway Department to address the very dangerous intersection at Legion Drive and Lake Crest Drive, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. I don't think we've quite worked out, at least Zoom, you know, the online and the in-house because we do it in the community center room two-on-one. So that's something we need to work on so people who can't attend can come in online. And then, basically, we want to do, as part of the outreach, get more feedback. For each program that we do, we do an evaluation, so we get feedback from the people in the room about the program or the forum, and what they liked and what they would like to see improved. And I would like to increase outreach to the community, particularly for our educational programs, to find out more in the different various parts of Greenbelt, what the community needs are from the individuals. So that's basically the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And let's see, next up, Youth Advisory Board. Do we have anybody for the Youth Advisory Board? And Reparations Commission?
I think we should just use that mic. And Dr. Rosato is online, but obviously, we can't hear people on Zoom right now.
Yeah, it should be green after you press it.
Okay, there we go. Well, I'm not, I'm not Lois Rosato. Conrad and I are representing the commission. Lois, Lois Rosato, our chair, is at a workshop in College Park with the Lakeland Commission. So we're a little different. We're a one-time commission. We won't go past our, our mission of making recommendations to the commission. We, the commission was formed by council in December twenty twenty-two with twenty-one members. We currently have nineteen. Our first meeting was February twenty twenty-three. Our mission is to review, discuss, and make recommendations related to local reparations for African-American and Native American residents of Greenbelt. FY twenty twenty-five was a full year for us. We conducted outreach and research through interviews, forums, town halls, listening sessions, pop-up tabling with surveys, and we wrote articles for the news review. Some members submitted written and public testimony to establish a Maryland Reparations Commission in Annapolis in February twenty twenty-five. Three commissioners attended the First Repair National Reparations Symposium in Evanston, Illinois in December twenty twenty-four. We contracted for a significant amount of research help. We're working with the African-American Redress Network. We just finished a project with University of Maryland seniors capstone team. And we also worked with Howard University Movement Lawyering Clinic to advise us on approaches to reparations that would, that would be, that would, could withstand some legal tests. We're focusing on housing and education, and we've compiled the history of demographic changes in Greenbelt that was mostly through the UMD team. So our goals and priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is to complete our final report with recommendations for reparations. And to do that, we have some priorities. We want to contract with an indigenous reviewer. One of the major holes in our dynamics is we don't have an indigenous resident that's working with us on the commission. So we're trying to identify a reviewer who can help us look at our research. We want to continue interviews, public meetings, gather public feedback through various channels, compile, incorporate, and integrate research. We'd very much like to overcome some resistance we're having from GHI to do research, and we're hoping maybe some of the GHI residents on the, on the council might talk with us and review what's, what's been happening and not. And we'd like to identify our remaining research gaps and complete our research. I don't know, Conrad, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, just a few things. By considering aspects of Greenbelt life that is not as open to our African-American community, be it access to transportation, recreation, the arts, connecting with respective organizations, a working relationship with the police, and other city departments as well, discrepancies in education, housing opportunities and the high cost of housing that weigh on the American, the African-American community in Greenbelt, more so than others, as well as, of course, throughout the county, where African-Americans earn less per capita than other populations. One of the key elements to the key is that there is less publicity of city activities in some of the communities outside of Old Greenbelt. We participated in a recent farmer's market and have interesting interviews with, and it's always interesting, with John Henry Jones. Tomorrow, we'll have another interesting interview with Steve Skolnick. I'm sure it will be most interesting. And later, with Sylvia Lewis, and are working with all areas of Greenbelt, the Native American community as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Reparations Commission. So any luck with, with the audio on, for Mr. Jackman?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah.
You can? Oh, great.
Well, we, looks like we save the best for last. Welcome, Charles.
Okay. Well, I'm on the Advisory Committee on Trees, and a full complement of members is, is three. We currently have two members, myself, the chair, and Robert Trumbull, and we're in need of another member. Major accomplishments in fiscal year twenty-five. ACT members provided input on the Buddy Attic Park master plan. Secondly, ACT planned and held the twenty-fifth Arbor Day event for Greenbelt on April the twelfth, along with Public Works. So it's been twenty-five years since ACT was first formed. And this year, it took place at the playground near the intersection of Plateau Place and Ridge Road. Public Works personnel prepared the holes, and eleven trees, including white oaks, hickory, papa, and dogwood, were planted by volunteers. And this included participants from Greenbelt, as well as a nearby sorority. Thirdly, ACT conferred with Public Works Staff Liaison Brian Townsend about tree planting and removals in support of the high tree canopy coverage for Greenbelt. Goals and priorities in fiscal year twenty-six. Following along with that, we, we are going to be supporting and implementing measures to continue the high tree canopy coverage, which is currently at sixty-two percent, as well as the Tree City USA designation for the city of Greenbelt, through recommendations related to replacement trees, as well as new plantings. Secondly, we're going to be planning and coordinating the Arbor Day planting in April of twenty twenty-six. And of course, there are several other things that come up at the meetings that we deal with. Thank you for your attention.
No, thank you so much. That was well worth waiting for. So we, we've cycled through all of the committees at this point, and it's about eight-thirty right now. I suppose we can pause for a moment. If there are any specific questions from council, and, or if there are any specific questions from the public, we can pause before we dive back in to the, the rest of the session. Councilmember Pomp.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, on the steps, on the stair strips, I just literally yesterday sent a message to the city manager with pictures of the steps and where the strips are missing. So I, I will follow up on that. But just so you know, that, just now, because I talked to somebody at your forum this weekend about that, they said something to me about it, and I was like, I'm just going to send an email and see what's going on with it. So hopefully, that will get revenue soon.
May I pause him?
Yeah, I just, um, not, I just was thinking of, as we were, different people were talking about different things and thinking about some connections that I wanted to highlight. I was thinking about the Advisory Committee on Education, talking with the school student government groups, and obviously, we have some, we have some gaps in our Youth Advisory Committee, of which Danielle is the, is the liaison. And actually, I need to talk to you because I had somebody who was interested, an adult member of that, if we're missing some, so I'll talk to you about that later. But I think, just make sure we make that connection, that if you're talking to those student government groups, that's a great recruitment ground for people on the Youth Advisory Committee. The other thing I was thinking about, that I don't think our master plan talked very much about public art in Buddy Attic, so that could be something to talk to the Arts Advisory Board, as well as, as we're doing the, the, looking at the, in Greenbelt West things. And I think the welcome signs we talked about as well, that, where was Crab, Crab was talking about that, Crab over there. And so I think that's another connection. And then the last one that I noticed, that just, just to call out again, is Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and pointing out to APB, when you're, when, because you will have maybe more review with that, although maybe it's gone through enough approval that it won't be actually, but I guess, so that may not be for that, but...
Talking about seventy-ten, Greenbelt Road.
Yeah, seventy-ten. But I guess maybe we're past the point where you're going to be looking at it anymore.
Reviews are done.
Yeah.
And that was, I think, in twenty twenty-four, so that would have, not even... Was like a traffic, or a parking departure, which was pretty perfunctory. Yeah.
So then, okay, so then that, that needs to be on us when we have a work session with them eventually, to make sure that we specifically invite the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I was just trying to make note of connections, and maybe other people have other things that they thought about, but I think that's one of the advantages of having us all in the room together, is, is hearing what other people are doing, is making those connections. So no questions, just those comments to make.
Well, thank you. Other councilmembers, Councilmember Niesel, please.
Thanks. One thing that comes to mind when we're talking about involving youth and engaging them, I know that the Forest Preserve Advisory Board has done an amazing job working with Eagle Scouts and also a couple Girl Scouts on their various projects, and they might be able to provide your group a framework for perhaps reaching out to local schools or local scout groups if you have anything that needs to be done, or any kind of gaps that you need to fill. There are always volunteers out there who do need to fulfill requirements, and so if you are interested, they might be able to let you know how they worked with the scouts, and how your board might be able to benefit from that.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great point, and also that's another potential source of individuals to recruit to, to serve on the Youth Advisory Committee as well. It's always, there's constant churn in, in the Youth Advisory Committee because people grow older, and they go off to school. And although we actually raised the, the age limit at one point quite a few years ago to twenty-one, I believe, to serve on that committee, there's still constant churn. So it seems like, overall, with recruitment, most of the advisory boards are at eighty percent, eighty, ninety percent. And we've been working very, very hard, the city manager and staff, in trying to find more creative ways to, to get the word out that serving on our advisory boards is a very important thing, and there are some benefits to serving on the board. And I know that's not why most of you serve, but we try and do what we can to acknowledge your service and to, to do a few things to actually make it nice for you. So we have our advisory board dinner each year, and I believe there's a discount on some city services belonging to the, the Aquatic and Fitness Center. So at this time, I think we're going to pivot. Any comments from Councilmember Pope?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you that you're all here, and thank you for all the great work you're doing, because I know you're spending your own time and effort, so I think that's really appreciated. Just one comment about how we all can work together, and I think Dr. Prissel just mentioned that maybe Public Safety Advisory Committee could also help with some safety issue and work with the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I think that would be a really nice connection as well. My question to you is, what is it you need from us? Is there something that we can serve you better, help you better, you know, be more accessible, or, so any, anybody have any, any ideas how, how we can be maybe more approachable? Maybe you feel like, you know, maybe you're missing? I know not everyone has a council liaison or even staff liaison, I think. So, but any, any suggestions or ideas or comments?
I'm glad you asked that question, because something that usually comes up is a question about council referrals. Council in our meetings and work sessions will refer things to various advisory boards. And sometimes you ask us questions back, and those lines of communication and the follow-up, sometimes things get lost in the, in the message between referral and getting, getting an answer back. So let's just see. Do any of you have any comments about, Mr. Hurley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think the city...
Ah, green. That's the magic color. Okay. Speaking of Greenbelt, the city has been, I think, terrific in working with the Reparations Committee. What has been made clear when the development company that owns Franklin Park was here, and there were, of course, a number of residents from, I keep saying Spring Hill Lake, Franklin Park, that were there. And their sense of obligation to the community of people that they serve needs to be strengthened. And I know that point's been raised before, but I think it's a really important part of this whole puzzle, and kind of not only bringing people together, but to make our community stronger together. So I just want to urge council to, and staff to keep an awareness about that, because the residents of Franklin Park are very frustrated. I don't know about the, the other areas, but I know the area of Franklin Park really well. So I just want to urge you to pay attention to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Lippert? Mr. Lamont? Or wait, Mr. Microphone? No, Mr. Lippert.
I know several, well, a number of years ago, it was brought up that a lot of the committees and boards do not know what's going on after we make a recommendation to city council. And there was a spreadsheet that was developed that indicated, you know, when it was submitted and if there was anything done, and I haven't heard of anything on that for, I think, a number of years. So we might want to think of resurrecting that. And for Greenaces in particular, when we developed years ago a sustainability framework document, I know the intention was, and it was implemented at least one year, that it would go to all the heads of the various departments, and they would review it and update it. And I haven't heard anything about what's going on with that. That would be nice. Thank you.
So with regard to the referrals, the city clerk and the city manager actually keep a log. There is a spreadsheet, and if you look in the city manager's report, there is usually actually a page with that list of referrals, or there should be, or sometimes there is, maybe not right now. I know it lives on the website someplace, so the referrals are tracked, but perhaps we need to be more intentional about sharing them back and forth. And just as far as what actually happens when, when an advisory board submits a report, council will generally put that on the consent agenda and accept...
committees and boards do not know what's going on after we make a recommendation to city council. And there was a spreadsheet that was developed that indicated, you know, when it was submitted and if there was anything done. And I haven't heard of anything on that for, I think, a number of years. So we might want to think of resurrecting that. And for Green Aces in particular, when we developed years ago a sustainability framework document, I know the intention was, and it was implemented at least one year, that it would go to all the heads of the various departments, and they would review it and update it. And I haven't heard anything about what's going on with that. That would be nice. Thank you.
So with regard to the referrals, the city clerk and the city manager actually keep a log. There is a spreadsheet. And if you look in the city manager's report, there is usually actually a page with that list of referrals. There should be, or sometimes there is, maybe not right now. I know it lives on the website someplace. So the referrals are tracked, but perhaps we need to be more intentional about sharing them back and forth. And just as far as what actually happens when, when an advisory board submits a report, council will generally put that on the consent agenda and accept the report. And at some time, a council member will actually pull, or the city manager will pull an item off of the consent, take that item and make it into a discussion topic, either at a work session or a council meeting. So when you send a report, it goes on the consent agenda, council reads it, and we make a determination when we can fit it in for further discussion in a work session or as an agenda item at a council.
Well, I know, I know a lot of the recommendations get accepted. We had trouble understanding the difference between accepted and approved. But we rarely see what happens with the recommendations either being approved or not approved.
It just takes time. We get a lot of, a lot of business, a lot of referrals, a lot of items. Do the best we can. Mayor Portem?
Yeah. And I think that, that spreadsheet you're referring to is, I think, more about resident petitions and requests. I think the referrals, because it doesn't include city, it doesn't, it doesn't, it, so that may be something that maybe, maybe at some point there was. But I think the one that's in the city manager's report is the petitions and requests. But I think something, something more specific for the advisory board processes. And I think actually that could be connected. We're, we're doing sort of our legislative retreat on Wednesday because some of those things, some of the things from the advisory boards are going to be part of that, the process of sort of local legislative priorities. And are we looking at new ordinances or new things? And so I think that we're starting to try to track that a little bit better with a spreadsheet. And so I think there, there may be sort of two different parallel things that are going on, but we might be able to, to merge them or make sure that they talk to each other.
Now, that, that referral spreadsheet exists or existed, I don't know. And I have seen it.
And I think, Ms. Anderson was just saying she's going to share it.
But that's not the one that's in the packet every week.
No.
Let's see. Mayor Jay Davis, Mr. Rand, Ms. Cressler?
Ah, there we go. Some new, new things since I've been on council. Jay Davis, I'm on the advisory planning board. When I was on council, one of the things that would help get the referrals to be discussed by council and then approved was that the council liaison, council member liaison should keep a track. And I used to pester, I know for Forest Preserve Advisory Board and Arts Advisory Board, I would make sure that the recommendations got on. So it's, it's a two way street.
It's a two way street.
Even the staff liaison could keep track. And if there was a chart, that would help. But if each individual council member or staff member would keep track and then kind of make sure that it got on the agenda, that would probably help a great deal.
And of course, we get, we get more reports from some advisory boards and others just because of the nature of the advisory board. So I think finding, you know, the, the city, we're about to move to a new website, like in the next month. So I haven't really seen the prototype, but I know the goal was to make information more accessible. So but nothing would be more than three or four levels down. So I'll be looking to, to find a more prominent place, hopefully so that you advisory board chairs and your members will be able to, to find out exactly what the status of your report is. Mr. Rand, and after this, we're going to kind of pivot back. There's some specific agenda items we need to come up with.
Yeah. So just related to this, I'm looking at this spreadsheet that's Advisory Board Committee reports. And it's, it's actually pretty helpful. But the last, it looks like the last date is January 2024. I just want to, as a resident, the advisory board, the advisory committees and boards are producing some very important reports. And they're, they're so hard to find. As mayor, as you mentioned, they're, they're approved by the consent agenda. And then you have to try to go back and figure out what meeting was that at, and go back and open the agenda and then find the link. Maybe this will be taken care of with a new website. But if under each advisory committee on the website, you could have a list of all their reports, that would make it so easy to find these valuable pieces of information.
Well, thank you. Thank you. You know, I have high expectations for the new website. It's particularly being able to search and find things. So knock on wood. And let's see. Dr. Kessler?
I just had a really easy one. I was going to address what we just talked about, whether we could spend, talked about enough now. One simple thing that we used to get all the time was we actually had a list of the members that were on your committee with their email addresses and their phone numbers. And it was kept current. And we got it on a regular basis. I haven't seen one of those for a year. I haven't seen, I mean, the whole time that I would, even toward the end of when I was still chair, we weren't seeing it. And if we asked, then it took repeated requests. It might show eventually. But and all I'd do would be nice to actually get a master list with all the committees. Because that way, chairs would have everybody's, you know, all the chairs, you know, email addresses and phone numbers. So we can all talk to each other. Because sometimes there's, you know, a lot of collaboration that can be going on. We have projects that, you know, we wanted to crab as well as senior citizens on, different groups, and it'd make it a lot easier for us to talk to each other. Plus, that way you know who your new members are too. And the new members, you know, list right away and it says, oh, this is who's on my committee. Now I know who these people are and how to get along.
Well, let me ask you a question to the whole group here. How would you feel about actually having the members of your committee and your names publicly available on the website and having contact, direct contact information? Is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Uh, no, I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
Okay. Mr. Lamont? And if you're, if I.
I think having the email group, the group email for the arts, for example, for the Arts Advisory Board, there's an AAB email address through the city. I think that's really helpful if somebody wants to contact the Arts Advisory Board. Because if I'm not available, then somebody else might be available. I don't like the idea of having my personal information on there, but other people might be okay with that. It does, that does open the door for people to reach out directly to me and either, you know, most of that communication is probably going to be appropriate, but there might be communication that you don't want to get personally.
Okay. Mayor Portem, then we can, I see there's, there's a comment from Mr. Orleans.
Yeah, and I guess it's sort of maybe two separate questions because I think one is making sure that the people who are on the advisory board have access to it. And I think that's what Dr. Cressler was talking about. But I'm actually interested, Mr. Lamont, would you, or others, would you be okay with having your names listed as members of the board, but maybe only a centralized email so that it lists Tom Lamond is a member of the Arts Advisory Board, but the only contact information is sort of a generic Arts Advisory Board email?
Yes to my name and no to my contact information.
Okay. And but I think so there, there may be a balancing point that we can, we can strike so that people know who in the community are on the different advisory boards by name, but contact information is a little bit more hidden.
Right. We'll have to. And that's a pet peeve of mine. That's why I asked, because I think, I think there should be a way for people to kind of reach out to the advisory boards directly and also to have a sense of who's on there. Some, but we'll have to, we'll research that and see what we can do. Take, Carol?
I just want to say, as with my name being changed to Chair in November, December, the information has to be updated and updated quickly in order for you to do that. And that includes updating the group emails. Because right now, our group email is not updated either. So that has to be there in the operation piece to do that.
Right. And we'll take Ben?
Just to piggyback off of that, I mean, we had an incident, quote unquote, not incident really, but, but where something had been sent out to the advisory planning board email, but didn't come to any of the members. And so there's something with how it's set up in the city that it has to be like, I think Jamie said it was, it had to be a city email that was on the listserv that she was looking at. And then someone else, something else had gone out. So it sounds like maybe other boards have group listservs that their, things are sent out to with an email address from the city. But, but I know that APB is not updated at all and doesn't work.
Well, let's, let's note that as an administrative action item, we'll look into what we can do to facilitate that, just get our consent, make sure that it's set up, and figure out whether it's feasible, how often something like that can be updated. Because I mean, we've only got so many people on staff, and that's because the budget is losing so much money. So at this time, Mr. Rand?
Yes. Speaking on behalf of my committee, we are all public people, so to speak, in terms of the fact that we have been appointed, so therefore should be in the public eye and domain, who we are on the committee. Given the nature of what we do, which is confidential, I would not want to see personal contact information, et cetera, for a variety of purposes. We generally have a policy that we will not speak with the public about anything that comes before us. So that kind of thing. In fact, we don't really even talk to council much unless you guys contact us individually. We don't reach out to you. So, okay.
Thank you. I want to take a question from Mr. Orleans or any other, is there anybody else on line?
There's one, there's one comment online from Dr. Rosato saying, no personal information on the website. Each advisory committee should have a government email address. And I think that's sort of what we're settling on. We might need to sort out some details, but yeah.
Basically, that's, that's exactly what my comment meant. Just in case it wasn't clear, is that we had a list that was an internal list. It was not to be made public. And it was understood within the committee that this was considered a confidential list. So our, and we only ever got our committee. I mean, it would be kind of nice at least to have some kind of, you know, master list that's amongst us, but not made public. And it needs to be emphasized that everybody on these committees, and I think all of us, you know, obviously are responsible enough to not share it with the public. So I think it, it does need to be kept confidential. And I think each committee then should just share their, their committee email address and then, and to address the people that have made comments. We have had some problems with emails. You have to really stay on top. Anytime you have a new member come on or you have a member that's leaving, you've got to go through your, your staff liaison and say, can you make sure that this person's taken off? Can you make sure this person's on? Because otherwise, it just doesn't happen. And so probably what's happened is, you know, you've got a lot of old, older people that don't exist anymore in your committee, and they're getting all your emails, but you're not getting your emails. And that's probably what's going on. Because we've had that problem.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's take a couple of public comments. Mr. Orleans, you had a comment? Please go to the podium. Hey, good evening. Please, good evening. Go ahead.
Hearing any audio from that mic, Mr. Orleans, so I don't know if you need to get it.
Some boards and committees are more reluctant than, thankfully, some others in advising council on things that are in the area of interest of that border committee. And I've long thought and said that that was a mistake. Council may refer something to a respective border committee. And appropriately, obviously, the border committee members would report back to council on that referral. But it may well be in your area of top, of concern that you would want to provide advice to council and that they've not asked you to do it. There's no reason not to do it. And I think council should want to hear as much advice from all the members of the boards and committees as would be provided by those members. And so in the future, I would hope, since it's not stipulated anywhere that a border committee can't advise council on something in its area of interest or concern, that they will start doing so more often than, than not. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Let's move on to another section of the agenda. And we'd like to talk a little bit about group process. We'd like to talk about reappointments as well. So one of the things that I'm acutely aware of is our advisory boards have different charges and function in different ways. Some meet only as needed or as required. Others take a pretty wide, wide approach to their charge. And they do, in fact, refer items to council without council making a request. Others are more focused on the wider community, so are focused on outreach and doing town halls. And so the reports, there aren't necessarily reports from that outreach. There, there are, but they, it's a different kind of an affair. So I know the council member McKinney in particular was interested in having a discussion about operating procedures. Councilmember, would you like to elaborate?
Sure. And thank you again, everybody, for your time and all of your efforts that you really have put onto these committees. And I think we've heard a lot of things already in this conversation about how we can make it easier for you to then be able to give information back to us. And it seems as though we hope that the new website will give us some reprieve in getting some of that information out. But I think all of us are seeing that it's hard to find information. It's hard to know who to contact and when to contact and how we're going through that process. So I was really interested in understanding how your committees operate internally as far as how you get information to each other, then how it gets to your chair, and then how best we can, we can respond to you. Separate from that is looking at reappointments and appointments. It sounds as though, I think the mayor said, we're about 80% for most of the committees and boards. And so one of the things that I'm interested in is as far as sort of communicating back is, how are you looking at your attendance and participation? Is that something that you look at when you're determining, you know, how to advise, who, because we, we are making appointments, but we're not necessarily hearing from you on how we can ensure that we're making the best appointments to ensure that your work is, it's helpful to your work. So I think that's another part that we wanted to sort of consider. I don't think we have to have anything that is overly formalized, but just understanding how we can get the best information back to you, how you are sort of communicating to your participants on and your membership, and then how we can ensure that we are providing the best appointments for you to operate effectively.
So that's a lot to kind of absorb because there are a lot of pieces to that. And also there's a question about term limits and whatnot. So with the chairs in the room, could everyone raise their hands if the chairmanship, chairwomanship changes every year or? Okay. And how many, how many of you, the process for a chair and a co-chair, is that something that is reviewed every few years or is it more based on tenure? Okay. Yeah, please.
I've been on the committee maybe four or five years, and we've never reviewed it. It's in our bylaws. We actually have bylaws for our committee. And it says that we have a chair and a chair-elect. So we would have to change the bylaws because the chair-elect automatically becomes the chair the next year. So you can't be the chair and the chair-elect at the same time. So this year, we do have a problem because we don't have a chair-elect, but we have a new member. So we're pretty sure we'll get one. But it's in our bylaws that we have those distinct positions, and the chair-elect automatically becomes the chair.
Okay. Couple of other comments on rotating chairs. And then we'll kind of pivot maybe to the bylaws and asking how many of you have reviewed and updated your, your bylaws this year. Dr. Cressler and then Mr. Rand? There you go.
So we go through an election every year, and we elect, you know, a chair, obviously, each time. The goal would be to have a vice chair as well. We have not really had one for the last couple of years, or maybe the last several years now. And that's typically just because, you know, it's kind of like, okay, you know, who wants, who's willing to become chair? And, you know, and then there's a vote. And then it's kind of like, all right, who's willing to be the vice chair? And usually, everybody sits there on their hands going, you know, doing one of those, like, what? You know?
That happens a lot.
And so we really haven't had any volunteers lately. I, I am not currently chair, but I was probably chair. I know I was chair for more than 10 years. I completely lost track. It was probably 12 at least. I don't know. Somebody probably might have a better idea.
Okay.
So, you know, it's, a lot of times, that's what happens. On our committee, it's the same person just ends up being chair because, you know, you kind of get up there and go, okay, anybody else want to do this? And they all look at you like, you know, what? You know, I don't hear you. And then, you know, and it's like, well, if you're still willing to do it, fine, you know, and there's a vote, and that's how the person just ends up doing it again.
And let's see, I think I may have skipped over Mr. Doggett. Do you have a, so the Forest Preserve Advisory Committee has a unique way of approaching governance?
We use dynamic governance instead of proper rules of order, but similar to this. I mean, the second newest member, not encountering the newest appointee, and so it was a case of everyone else stepped backwards, and I ended up being co-chair, even though I was the newest member of the, but I only became co-chair because I wasn't familiar enough. I didn't want to become full chair. So then we kind of ad hoced it, and we had a co-chair situation. But we are overdue to have a new chair election. We know, and we're aware of it. We're about to have a discussion about how we're going to have co-chair, who's going to be the next chair.
Okay. Mr. Rudd and Janet, or who wants to go next?
We are chartered to elect a chair and a vice chair annually. Again, we try to do everything unanimously. And whoever wants to step up or has issues or things like that, we go from there.
When you say unanimously, you kind of work by consensus?
Yes. No, we almost always try to do everything unanimously. And we'll work things out till we can get to a unanimous position. My 10 years, there's been two, three chairs, I believe. So that, and I think that would be it. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Janet?
Yeah. My husband said the same thing to me, that they asked who wants to be chair, and I didn't step back fast enough. But for us, it's a question of tenure. I was on the committee for 11 years. Everybody else is there a year or two. So it's a question of tenure.
Okay. Matt?
So I heard lots of questions, but the election of a chair specifically, I'm the person willing to do it. And so I am, I'm the chair, and I anticipate that I'll be reelected because of that. And as far as appointments and reappointments are concerned, I mean, we do have a member with an attendance issue. And so I don't find out about appointments until I get a letter that says, you know, you're up for reappointment, like, you're in the process. And, you know, I'd, I'd like a chance to intervene and bring the attendance issue up before a certain member's reappointed.
Please go ahead.
Similar to what you said.
Get closer to the microphone. Touch the button on the bottom when it turns green. There you go.
Right. So similar to what most other people have said, I'm not aware that we have any official documentation for, how the board is run or who runs for office. Like I said, Rick had been in the position for 10 years or more, and he just decided he had had enough. And I think almost everyone else was either unavailable or they were too new, so they got placed on me. And that's how I became chair. But I think it would be a good idea to have official documentation and proper processes and things like that, so we could operate more formally.
Yeah. Mr. Lamont?
I, I'm also the person who didn't raise my hand fast enough, and I got elected as chair. But I, I wanted to talk about the appointment, reappointment issue and the attendance issue. We had a couple of people who just never showed up. And we, you know, I, I kind of had to go out of my way to, to make that point, to say, hey, somebody should talk to this person. If you're going to count on the chair people to provide that information when you're considering somebody for a reappointment, maybe that question should be asked to the chairperson, you know, that, are these people coming to meetings? Should they, should they be reappointed? Because I don't hear, like, like you said, I don't hear about it until I get a letter from the city addressed to whoever's being reappointed, and I'm copied on it saying, this person's reappointed.
Yeah. Sounds like we need to close the, the loop on that better. I know with some, some of the committees, particularly during COVID, the participation could be virtual. In fact, that, that had to be the case. And I'm thinking of one committee in particular, several members traveled extensively, but they were participating extensively at the same time. So in that case, I think that the committee needs to kind of decide, attendance, does it have to be in person? Can it be if someone is going on sabbatical or something, and they, they ask the committee to take that into consideration? So somehow that, my personal view is that the committees need to kind of work that out. But I, I do think that it's important that each of our advisory boards have some documentation of their governance and how they run, either bylaws, formal bylaws. Some of the committees are actually expelled out in the city code, in the city charter. So they're, that's very, very formal. But we've asked this in the past. So how, how many of you with a show of hands do not have any sort of bylaws or operating rules that they, they run by? Green Aces does not. The Board of Elections, well, part of the Board of Elections, I'm sorry.
I would say, because I am the newest member to the Board of Elections.
I am actually the newest member to the Board of Elections. So my perspective is that there wasn't any documentation provided to me when I joined the board. But, so I'm not aware, but someone who's been on the board longer may have a different answer.
And I know that part of your responsibilities are drawn out in the city code. It's very, very formal. So I'd like to make that request. I don't want to step on any points that, you know, any wants to bring up, sort of direct the conversation forward.
No. I, thank you for that. I do want to just make sure I'm clear. I think there are things that are in the city code and the charter that direct certain boards and committees to operate a certain way. But then I think there are general procedures and things that we're talking about here that could potentially help each of the committees work efficiently. And so I think there are two separate things that we're actually asking about whether or not you have it placed. So I wanted to just make sure we understood that. And in addition to the participation and attendance, I think another thing we're wondering about is you all have various people, as the mayor is talking about, participating at different levels. Is that also something that you all think about and consider, especially when we're talking about reappointment? Is that something that we should be thinking about? Are there certain members of the committee that may not just be able to not just be there, but are not giving you the advice and the guidance that you need to make the advice back to us?
And we do need that feedback if there's an issue. If you don't tell us about it, the council has no way of knowing. Tom and then Ben.
Yeah. I just want to say that there are different levels of participation, but we know when somebody's participating or when they're not participating. So for one person coming to every meeting is participating. Other people work, you know, travel a lot for work. I, I've had to take leave because I traveled a lot for my work. But I, but I know, I, I informed the committee, and the committee understood where I was. It's when people kind of ghost us, you know? It's when people just kind of disappear. We've had people who just didn't even answer emails. And so at that point, I'm surprised when I get a reappointment letter. There's just been no communication. And, and, and your point is really good. There's different levels of participation, and people are going to give what they can. And so we, we think about it in terms of, well, this person misses a lot of meetings, but their input is really valuable.
And on the other hand, if someone has a health issue, it shouldn't be a question of them ghosting the, ghosting the committee. If they're incapacitated and they haven't been able to communicate, that's one thing. But if there's a health issue, I would think that they, they need to communicate that back to the committees whole, not just to the chair. And, you know, that discussion should, should take place.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess I would echo some of the comments already made about attendance being one sort of issue and then contributions being another issue. You know, we've had several instances where, for instance, the planning department came to us with an ask to do, to review the bike ped plan, right? And we parceled it out to everybody, and maybe one or two of the board members actually did review it and went out and did site visit, et cetera. Everyone else just sort of showed up back to the meeting and said, oh, yeah. Didn't say anything really. So I think that's the, where I was, that, that's where I think it's important to have some of that feedback going on between council and, and the board, because I think if we serve at the behest of council, then there needs to be a certain level of, of expectations and quality in terms of what, what is actually being provided. I mean, just volunteering and showing up, I think, is the bare minimum. And actually contributing and participating more than even, I don't know, asking a couple superficial questions and, or making a couple superficial comments and then voting is, in my mind, also sort of not sufficient. And so, I mean, you know, when I was talking about our vacancies, I'd like to see people appointed to APB who are appropriate to APB and not just, you know, random Joe or Jane off the street, but somebody who has some relevant skill, you know, background, understanding of the issues that we face and can speak to that and contribute. Because we've, you know, one of the, we've lost people who have some of that depth of experience, and I'd like to see it, it replaced and continue.
Let me just say this. As we recruit, you know, we run ads in the Green Belt News Review, and we depend on, on each of you in your committees, the, your word of mouth is very powerful. Sometimes when someone sees that there's a vacancy in newspaper ad, that doesn't really tell them very much. So that's one of the reasons why we insist that an individual attend at least one of the advisory board members. That's one of the reasons why we have that code of conduct also, to just provide sort of a framework. But, and as council interviews, we, you know, we, we have different criteria in our minds. We're looking for someone that has an interest. We're looking for someone that maybe has a particular skill set, but we're also looking for geographical representation. We're looking for diversity. So these are all things that council is thinking of when we, when we do make an appointment. So Dr. Kessler, Shay Davis, then we need to kind of wrap things up, and Mr. Lippert. But, but I am going to task you all, or council would like to task you all, looking back to see that you have either bylaws or some sort of a statement on how you operate, so we can, we can also have that in hand as we're interviewing people, so the public knows. Please.
I think with PSC, historically, we have had problems with attendance, things like that. With the code of conduct that was instituted a number of years ago, ours is written in a way that it actually says in there, you know, that if you miss a certain number of meetings, then you are at risk of being replaced. There are exceptions to that rule, and things like health and stuff like that, you know, we will, we can make exceptions to that rule. But one of the things that chairs have to do is they have to communicate with their staff liaison. And then, as well as Benita, because that's where that circle gets closed. Because if we don't talk to them and say, hey, you know, person, you know, X is not showing up, they have ghosted us for X number of meetings. And that's, and that's a big part of it, is that they have to communicate. They can't just not show up and not tell us anything. And then the other thing that we did this, and probably, I guess in this past year, and it kind of started with, with COVID, obviously, but it's continued, is that we have continued Zoom meetings. We have done some live ones. There's been some discussion within the group about, do we go back to 100% live? Do we stay with Zoom? There's a whole bunch of us that really like the Zoom meetings. And I think we get better participation, to be honest. But we have agreed as a group that we will, definitely during the colder months, we've decided to Zoom for sure. We've kind of extended that a little ways now into the, you know, into the rest of the year, because it's kind of like, I kind of like these. But what we have decided is that we will try to meet live at least a couple times a year, so that we are at least face to face a little bit of the time. And we're not 100% Zoom. So, and that's, that's kind of how we've approached it.
Okay. Jay Davidson, John Lippert.
One of the things that perhaps everyone here has probably asked themselves, okay, I'm at this meeting, I'm giving all of these concerns, is council doing anything about it? And I have to say that in a previous year, someone from this group suggested to council that an applicant attend a meeting. So they do hear you every now and then. They also, the code of conduct was suggested by this group at a work session. So there is some working together. So now we just have to continue it, whether it's, you've made the suggestion that when someone is coming up for reappointment, that they send it to the chair. The chair probably should be keeping an attendance record, so that's a responsibility of the chair, so you know, and your staff liaison would help you with that, you know, keep a chart. So there's, there's give and take, and I like the idea about checking for the bylaws and code. We'll have to do that with Advisory Planning Board. So there's many suggestions. And it used to be that there were many, many applicants. Many, you know, the old Green Belt way, there was like, there would be tons of applicants for every committee, and it's not happening now. So where council tried very hard to choose the best person, or choose someone with a skill, or geographically make it balanced, or make it gender balanced, it's very difficult when you have maybe four or five vacancies on a committee and one applicant. And you know that they desperately need somebody, anybody, a warm body, hopefully, that will go in there and do some work. So it's, it's a different age, and sometimes we can't be as picky as we'd like to be or selective, because we want to be sure that if someone wants to help and wants to volunteer, we'll, we'll give them a chance. So we'll have to work with some of our newbies sometimes to help them with that.
And the thing about checking with the chair, the committee chair, before a reappointment is made, that's low hanging fruit. I think we can, we can do that very easily. Mr. Lippert?
Green Aces has only had one new member that we weren't familiar with over the past several years, and it was very helpful that she came to the meeting, so we got to know her. So, I mean, I think that's, that's a great opportunity in order to, for, for the committee to, to evaluate the person and, and find out if he or she, you know, is appropriate for the committee. In terms of chairs being notified of who's coming up for reappointment, Benita has done a really excellent job of keeping me informed, because I keep getting these, these letters in the mail saying, being copied on so-and-so, your term is coming up, it's time for you to reappoint. And then when the person is reappointed, I get another copy. I'm well informed about that. I, I wish maybe that they were done via email, so not as many trees were chopped down, but I do know what's happening in that respect. In terms of the reappointment for the individual members, one of our members said the whole process is silly. process is silly. And frankly, I happen to agree. When they have to basically fill out the same form every three years, I mean, their skills probably haven't changed, their experience probably hasn't changed all that much. And it would be much easier for the members when it's time for being reappointed if it was simpler, that it was, do you want to reapply for this committee? Do you think you will still be useful to this committee? And if they say yes and they sign it and date it, I mean, I'm fine with that because I doubt very much that their skills have changed that much.
Those are good points. So on the other hand, on the other hand, the, we don't, I've heard from some residents that, that they think maybe some of the advisory boards are too insular. So we, we do want a little bit, I think council, I think I'm speaking for us all, we, we do want a little bit of churn from time to time and it's good to have new ideas coming in. So, you know, maybe there's some things that we can do to, to improve the application process. But, you know, the whole idea, someone was saying term limits, you know, they say term limits for council, term limits for the advisory board, term limits for the chairs. So.
It's hard enough to get, I mean, we still don't have a full contingency there. We're still missing one member. So, and I don't, there's only been one time that, in all the years that I've been chair, that we've had a full contingency of members.
Could be, but it's not. Let's see, Councilmember Pope, Councilmember Poppy, Charlotte.
Just a quick comment. Everyone is always looking forward to the five, 10, 15, 20 year pins too. So, you know, once we have term limits, that wouldn't be possible.
And institutional knowledge is important, Councilmember.
I was just going to say, I, I do like the idea that Dr. Kessler presented of, you know, that there's pretty clear notification that you have to attend X number of meetings or that you could be removed from the committee. Because it is, I do know that there are committees who have had trouble making quorum because of people who are repeatedly absent. And that's a problem. So I think that that's probably a good idea to make that a universal rule because I'm, that's what I'm hearing from a lot of you is that that can be an issue. And I also think we need, we do need to also consider what we do if someone is facing a long-term illness. Because again, we don't necessarily want to remove someone because they're ill. However, for the committee to do its work, you need to be able to make quorum. So I don't know if there's something else we need to think of, like of how that can work if we have, if, if there needs to be sort of like a, I don't know, a standby person who can take their place for a short period of time or, or something like that so that you all can continue to do your work because that is really important.
Yes, I think because Jenny is on our board, she kind of addressed one of the things I wanted to talk about, the issue of quorum. Because we've had a lot of challenges meeting quorum on our board. So we have seven people, but it's very difficult to get seven people to attend a meeting at any particular time. So one of the things that we were asking on, on the board was actually, who determines the number of participants on the board and could it be reduced so that we don't necessarily need to have like for our board, seven members, that we have maybe six or five? And if we have four or five active participants, that could help us meet quorum.
My response would be, yes, you could, but another way that you could go about it is you could change the quorum. I mean, you have seven members, but a quorum, there's only three members. So I, I know each one of these committees works in a different way. Some of them are mandated with the quorum, the number of members, others have bylaws. I think that all of the advisory boards should have a clear understanding of what their charge is, kind of review that annually and, you know, write something down, document how you're working. Another question is just how, how are you, with the quorum question, how are you publicizing your meetings? Are they just on the city calendar or is that good enough?
The board email system, that we send our emails to all the board members ahead of time with the agenda and everything. And so one of the things that, two, three things that are affecting quorum, and again, Jenny kind of talked about this, some of them have long-term illnesses or their partners have an illness. So if it's in person, they're not able to attend in-person meetings. And then some people having difficulty with technology. So if it's Zoom, they're not able to join on Zoom. So what we've done is we, we try to alternate, you know, some meetings we have in Zoom and then other meetings we have in person. And then there's one or two people that actually just pretty much ghosted us, so to speak. Because I've been chair for a few months now and I've just not seen them. So we were wondering about that too.
Councilmember McKinney.
Do you think that it is, that we should look annually at the number of participants on each of your committees? So going back to the question of, should we continue to have seven? Should we continue to have nine? I know things change, actions and agendas change. Is that something that we should review annually or should, we should just sort of leave as is? I'm, I'm just wondering how you would determine that. And then in addition to that, I know that there are also a lot of issues and things that are of interest to the community that may not be getting addressed in different boards and committees that we have right now. Should we be looking annually at whether or not there are different committees that need to either be stood up to address some of more current issues that we don't maybe a board or committee isn't looking at? So I know that each of you have your charges, but I'm wondering if we are really addressing all of the charges that might be out there that may come up in the committee and then how do we do that? So if it's not fitting within a certain committee or board's current agenda, where do we place that, especially if it's a really important topic in our community?
Mr. Hurling and then Mr. Lamont.
I was just going to offer on the part of Green Belt Access Television, and I'm sure we could work with the city cable programming to have coverage, we could have interviews with the different committees. And there now, despite the fact that fewer people now are getting, subscribing, you know, to the cable, there are now so many different alternatives that we can help get the word out. And then, you know, have, you know, a brief 15 minute conversation interview with people from the different committees and tell us what, you know, you know, your committee does and why do you feel it's important and so forth. Maybe come up with something a little with greater spark than that. But, you know, I'm just offering on the part of Green Belt Access TV, the willingness to, to help get the word out about both vacancies as well as to let people know what are the issues that people are talking about. Because that's actually one of the big things. And if people could understand, make that connection between the issues that are being covered by the different groups, that might then spur people who have no idea by title of the organization, what that group does. But they'll say, yeah, I really want to know, how can we get more people involved in education in all the various issues? So just making the offer.
Mr. Lamont?
So on the question of quorum, I, I think we do have bylaws and I'm going to get them and I'm going to share them with you. But we, I think our bylaws say a majority of, of members have to be present. So if we have five members, then our quorum is three. If we have seven, it's four. And so what really happens is when those three that are ghosting you are still active, considered active members, it's going to be really hard to get quorum. But if you write into your bylaws, majority of active members, and then you, you say to city council, we've got three people who aren't talking to us. I mean, I think the quick action should be, okay, we remove those people, you know, we just, we just, they're off because they've missed three meetings, they haven't let us know, they're not responding to us. And that answers the quorum question.
Yeah, but you have to let us know. And some might argue that it shouldn't just be the chair's decision. Somehow the, the committee, the ones who are active need to talk it over.
We do that. We talk it over and our, our staff liaison is really good about, you know, kind of pointing out the rules to us. That's why I know we have a bylaws, which is pointed to things. But, and we do discuss it. We, we, we've had quorum issues and we've talked about how we can fix that. And when we got, when we had the, the people who weren't active removed, it pretty much cleaned it up right away.
Yeah, so I'll say it again, I want each of you chairs to kind of go back and then talk, you know, take a half an hour, an hour, or however long you really need to, to talk about how you run and so that we can gather that. Because, you know, the reason why we do this every year is to, you know, share some best practices. You know, there's a great deal of knowledge going across the entire city, different topics, you know, within your committees. And I think we can all learn from one another. And on council, you know, I think, you know, trying to move towards, you know, some standard operating procedures, but I don't know if that really fits the bill. I think some, some, the committees, the advisory boards are going to work the way that the members want them to work. Council just needs, needs to know. And by sharing that, by going back and, you know, unearthing this information, if it's not unearthed, updating it, sharing it back with council so that we can share with all of you, I think that'll be a great step in the right direction. Councilmember Pope.
Thank you. Yeah, I just really think the, you know, with the attendance issue, I think it's very important that you relay that to your staff liaison, if you have a staff liaison or your council liaison, if you have a council. Because the information needs to get to our city clerk and then she can reach out. And because I'm, I'm sure none of you want to get in some kind of tassel with, with another member on, on your board, of course, right? And that, that shouldn't be that way. But I think it's important that it gets to, to the clerk's office so she can reach out and remind that person, look, these are the rules, you know what, there is a attendance issue, what's going on? So we can fix that as fast as possible. Because it is hindering when you have, you know, when you don't have quorum, you can't get your minutes out because then people ask, well, where are your minutes? But you can approve them if you don't have quorum, so one thing leads to another. So it's just the communication between the, the staff liaison and, and, and the clerk's office is very important.
That's well said. Hey, there's a couple more points we need to touch on before we wrap things up. It's getting on, it'll be 10 o'clock before we know it. I'd really like to wrap up because all of us have things to do, places to be, people to see. So Jay, you have a question or a comment?
An answer to Mr. Councilmember McKinney's question about, are we having the correct number of boards and committees? I think if you go back in history, there were very few boards and committees. And when there's an issue, all of a sudden there's a new board or committee. I think the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee actually started out as a task force. And from there, they became a committee when we knew that that was something we needed to deal with. The Forest Preserve Advisory Board is relatively new. I mean, when we needed a forest preserve, they, they developed. And so I think when there is a serious lack of communication or something that's not working, council and the citizens especially come forward and they make sure that something is taken care of. So I don't think we have a problem with that. Because it, I mean, the fact that you've got, what, 15 boards?
Sixteen, sixteen.
That's quite a bit.
Okay. Hey, just one topic we haven't touched on is just the resources for training, onboarding, support, and also for good ideas. You know, council just finished up the budget process and we, we have a certain amount of funding that's available to any of your advisory boards if you make a request. We want to formalize that, that process. We tried to open it up first. We had funding just for ACE and ACE's funding, because it's very specific, is protected. But for the other advisory boards, we want to make it possible if you have a project or something that you need to do. That could be training, that could be some kind of a special project, council wants to accommodate that. So I'm just wondering, in terms of onboarding, is there some, something else council needs to do? Is, is there some specific training that you might need? Mayor Protet?
Well, these are the things that I've, I've, I've captured on that so far. New members getting a list of who is on their committee, new chairs getting contact information for their other chairs, making sure that new members are provided with the bylaws or other government documents. And I think also information about sort of like benefits and, and perks, like the discounted Aquatic Fitness Center membership and the dinner. Those are the things that I had noted thus far, of things that seem like they're onboarding things just as a start of a list from, just things have already come up in conversation.
Yeah, Carol.
When I came on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, I really had nothing. And it seems to me that you need some kind of document that whether they're getting on any committee, what you just said should be a document that they receive before they, you know, get on a committee. So that they know those, because it took me two years to realize I could get reduced rate with the aquatic center.
Me too, when I was on Prab.
So I would say the city needs to create a specific orientation document to advisory boards or any advisory group as a standard, general one. And then each advisory group could have a more specific one that they give to new members. And also, one of the things I do when I become a chair is, or we have new members, is immediately review the bylaws so that they know what we operate under. Like that group down there operates, doesn't operate under the Robert rules of order. So I think groups need to know that boring stuff.
Dr. Kessler and then Thomas.
And just to add to that document, I think the other thing that would help, I mean, hopefully every time a new chair is elected, hopefully there's somebody coming behind them that says, okay, this is how we do this. Because we get a referral from council and then there's a process. You know, the committee needs to look at it, they need to do certain things with it. But then when it gets written up, it needs to be, you know, put into a format that's going to be appropriate for council. It needs to, they, they need to know who that's going back to, you know? And I think it would probably help to put that on paper. That says, you know, when you send the, that, you know, that letter back or that report back or whatever it is that's going back, that these are the people that you should be sending it to. And maybe there can be a little bit of customization in there, you know, because like ours, for example, is not only going to go to our council liaison and our staff liaison, who is then going to shunt it to council, but ours is also going to go, say, to the chief of the police or maybe the deputy, you know, police chief and so forth, depending on what those things are. So those are things I think that just need to be written down, especially because occasionally, especially if there isn't, you know, like a chair and a chair elect so that one's sort of getting trained and pulled along, if something happens to that chair and they're not there to do the training, then the new person is kind of like, oh, well, I know we sit around in meetings to talk about stuff, but where do I send it?
Right. And everything should be coming through the city clerk, one way or the other.
Right.
That's, that's a good idea though.
But it would help just that, I think to have a piece of paper that actually said that. Because I think a lot of times when you're brand, brand new, you're kind of like, you're in the headlights. It's kind of like, oh, wait, I don't want to do it the wrong way or I don't. And we have had some problems historically. I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to say which years, I don't want to pin it on anybody. But we have said some things where, where people have done things very inappropriately and it has caused problems. And, you know, and sometimes people have sort of tried to, even people that weren't chair tried to do things that were not appropriate. And so there's some problems. And I think it helps to have the, this is what you need to do, this is what, and maybe there needs to be things, you will not do the following, you know?
Well, that's the code of conduct, capturing a lot of those things.
Right, it is part of that, but some of that stuff I don't know is, I don't think it's all in there. Some of the things that we've had problems with.
Please, if you have suggestions about the code of conduct, how we can improve that, we definitely need to have those. So the, this document that we're talking about with just orientation, onboarding, referrals, it, it should also be a public facing document so that our residents, other residents who are not on the advisory boards will know what the process is. Thomas.
I was pretty sure that the discount at the aquatic center was mentioned in the letter, the letter I got about the appointment. I can't use it because I have an ear thing, but I was curious because I remember with the reappointment process, like, you know, having to affirmatively say, I understand it's a tedious process, but I was wondering what percentage, I don't understand the mindset of these people that are ghosting us, they have to like not
They have to like not be attending meetings and then get a letter saying, do you want to be reappointed and fill out all the paperwork? And they still do that. So I'm confused as to, I was just once curious as to what rate of people do we just get, people not respond to say, we don't want, you know, say they don't want to get reappointed or don't respond to the inquiry about what do they want to be appointed?
I don't have a good sense of that. You know, we, we get letters from individuals that decide, are declining to be reappointed. Some people don't send anything at all. But that communication between council and the advisory board is very, very important. Each advisory board is different. There are different levels of participation. So if you have members that are traveling, they're on sabbatical, they have an illness, maybe they're changing jobs, but, you know, the committee, not just the chair, wants to keep them. That's something you have to hash out. But you need to let council know if there are individuals that should not, you don't, the group doesn't want, should not be reappointed.
Yeah.
Try and state it.
Let me think about the process. But I know that we keep track of it in our minutes, like we take attendance.
Yeah, you need to do that. So we'll take one question from the public, then wrap it up. Mr. Orleans, do you have a question or comment?
I don't know that I'm convinced that the members of any committee or board are so insular that they would not welcome the participation of residents at their meetings. Sometimes it's difficult to know when the meetings are occurring. I can't go to the website, but I can read the news review. And I sort of, I'm an analog person, I rely on. But a resident of Greenbelt cannot rely on the information conveyed on the city page in the news review because not all the board or committee meetings are listed there. And when some are listed, they're not, it's not stated whether they're in person and where or virtual. It's a great frustration of mine, which I've spoken to our city clerk about it numerous times and others numerous times. It would seem to me that if there is a master calendar, and I know that there is one, it's on the website, that that information could be conveyed to whomever lays out the city page in the news review so that every week there's an accurate reporting of which committee or board is meeting when and where or meeting virtually. So that residents would be able to attend. Some residents who might be interested, at least in attending and then maybe subsequently prospectively becoming a member, could do so. But they can't do so if they don't have that accurate information.
Thank you, thank you. Let me just ask one quick question. Do all of you allow public participation? Are there any restraints on public participation at your meetings? Mr. Rudd.
It is solely up to the person bringing the complaint, the employee, to decide whether they want a public hearing or a private hearing. There is no hybrid.
Mr. Horton.
Our meetings are noticed and available to the public.
Okay. Any other comments about public participation? I just want to thank you all for your service. You, you didn't step back fast enough, so you're, you're the chair. But, you know, these advisory boards are really, really important in terms of the city's commitment to public participation and getting views, being able to make referrals from council, but also for the information that you, the reports and the initiatives that you take on yourselves. This is very important. That's the way government works in the city of Greenbelt. So I, I know I'm speaking for the entire council when I, you know, I thank you for the, the amount of time. Some committees work really, really hard. You all work really, really hard. The Board of Elections is doing a whole lot of work. Green Aces is constantly pumping out things. The Advisory Committee on Trees, they're out there looking at the trees and making suggestions. So, you know, everybody, each of your committees, commissions have unique charges. And the way that you fulfill them is so important to the city. So I do want to remind you to please, you know, get a copy of your governance documents if, if the city has them. If you don't have them, talk about it with your committee. You need to do that every year with the referrals. We'll, we'll try and do a better job with the reappointments, making sure that the loop is closed. But our doors are open. And if you have suggestions, please refer them to the city clerk or to your staff liaison or to us directly. We really appreciate all that you do. And council, any additional comments?